And there was some re- just some small renumbering of the rules of procedure. I think this probably been clarified in the minutes of that meeting, but maybe the city clerk could address that.
They're provided to you on a yellow document that's laid on the table tonight.
Okay.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I just had a question. Obviously, I would approve what was presented. I thought that we had a good discussion and were able to go through the issues and address each one of them, but we did have some discussion about the language that we used tonight, that you used tonight to address everyone before public comment, that we were going to potentially put that into the rules and procedures, so, rules of procedure. So is that something we should address right now? Or should we approve this and then make an amendment after?
Mayor?
Yes.
It would be easier and less motions if you did it now. If that's what the majority of council wanted to do, you could certainly, you know, do that at this time.
Can we simply agree with a nod of heads? Or if there's any disagreement, we can discuss it at this point?
The resolution should probably be amended to incorporate that, and depending on where you want it, I would recommend that be in, was, is it seventeen?
The new rule number seventeen.
Okay. So, would you like to move that resolution, Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Well, would we just amend?
It would be just to amend the resolution to include the language that you were referencing.
Under rule seventeen?
Under rule seventeen.
I would make that motion to include the language that was presented today. We use for public comment and was also provided in writing to council members so that we could see it beforehand and voice any questions or concerns that we have. So I would move that that language is incorporated to the rules of procedure under rule seventeen.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, supported by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes to include the language used this evening before public comments as rule number seventeen in the rules of procedure. And now we'll vote on the adoption of the rules of procedure. Could someone please move that resolution? Councilman Teetz?
Move adoption of rules of procedure as printed.
Second?
Me, sorry.
We already had it.
It would be as amended, sorry.
As amended.
As amended, okay. Second? Councilman, moved by Councilman Teetz, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion?
And just for a point of clarification, it would be as, as corrections, as the corrections that were laid out at the table as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It would all be included.
Just to point that out.
Okay. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move to item I eight, approval of M dot subcontract with Tools Clark for construction manager at risk services for the Troy multimodal transit facility. Would someone please move the resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I'm going to move it, and if you don't mind, I was just going to read it into the record. Whereas the City of Troy received an $8,485,212 federal grant for the construction of the Troy multimodal transit facility through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, our high-speed intercity passenger rail, in parentheses, HSIPR program, Federal Rail Administration, FRA, as secured through Tiger Grant. And whereas on January 17th, 2012, City Council resolved that the total cost of the Troy multimodal transit facility shall not exceed $6,272,500. And whereas the construction manager at risk, also known as CMR proposals, were received and the CMR team of Tools Clark was selected in accordance with the qualifications-based selection process. Therefore, be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby awards the M dot subcontract between the City of Troy and Tools Clark to provide construction manager at risk services for the Troy multimodal transit facility at an estimated cost not to exceed $648,731, a cost which is included as part of the total estimated transit center cost and within budget for CMR services. And be it further resolved that the award is contingent upon Tools Clark's submission of properly executed proposal and contract documents, including agreements, insurance certificates, and all other specified requirements in M dot approval. And be it finally resolved that the mayor and city clerk are directed to execute the agreements once in acceptable form as approved by the Michigan Department of Transportation.
And second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I read all the support documentation, but I would just like clarification from the city attorney, if I may. Under this agreement, as I understand it and the intent, this construction manager at risk is responsible for making sure that we do not exceed the council-approved $6,272,500. They'll be monitoring all the expenses and making sure that that does not occur, we do not exceed. And if we were to exceed for some reason, they are liable. Construction manager at risk is liable. I would just like for the city attorney to just point that out in the contract, that language that holds them accountable so that we know we're all on the same page.
Attorney Bloom?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And actually, Mr. Van Dett is in the back room there as well. I would just indicate that this is the contract that was used by the City of Dearborn, so we did not draft this contract. But you are correct. It is not as explicit as we would have liked it, but really, it is in the RFP documents. It's not within the contract itself, but it's within the RFP documents which are attached and incorporated. And with that, I would defer to Mr. Van Dett, who I believe has the contractor with him as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd first of all like to correct a statement that you just made, Councilman Fleming, concerning the CMR being responsible for the contract not to exceed the $6.2 million cost. The CMR is actually responsible for assuring that the construction cost does not exceed $4,325,000. Just wanted to make that, make that clear.
That's right.
The CMR, the contract, the M dot contract that is before you tonight references the RFP for CMR services, and the CMR is, is not attached to this. I could have, but I didn't do it in the interest of, you know, conserving space and paper and whatnot. But the CMR delves into the, I'm sorry, the RFP delves into the CMR responsibilities. It talks about the CMR being responsible for developing the guaranteed maximum price, and that the guaranteed maximum price will be submitted to City Council for approval. And that submittal will include language that perhaps isn't as clear as we wanted it to be in the document that, that's before you tonight. But the CM, guaranteed maximum price by definition is a guaranteed price. It means that the construction manager, who's not only the manager, but he's also the constructor, is liable for any cost that exceed that guaranteed maximum price. So in other words, if concrete goes up, if steel goes up, whatever the case may be, that cost is not passed on to the city and it can, and by the contract, it cannot, the CMR's guaranteed price cannot exceed the budget amount. I will say, though, that, and as you're fully aware, that there are instances where if the scope is expanded beyond the contract, then that cost could go up. Now, for unforeseen circumstances, that's covered by the construction contingency. So the construction contingency is not included in the four point?
Four million, three twenty-five.
Three two five million. There is a 15% contingency for unforeseen conditions, and you add that to the A and E costs and the CMR costs, and that totals the, the grand total of $6.27250.
And if I may, only the city council can change the scope of the project.
Correct.
Only the city council can, in other words, you approved a, a design and a schematic and relevant specifications is completed now that was a scaled-down version for the transit center. If this council decided to change the scope, you'd have to do it by a resolution. Staff and the consultants can't change the scope of the work. Follow me?
Right.
Okay.
I have here this evening Alan Lower from Tools Clark.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Any questions that I can answer from any of you?
I think it's pretty clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, just let me supplement. I know, Councilman Fleming, you asked for the pages, and that would be on page nine and page 12, and then also in the CFR. So all of it together, that, that's the language that provides the assurances to council.
Thank you, gentlemen. Councilman Fleming?
Yeah. It's probably in there, but the agreement I was looking at, it kept referring to an exhibit one, and we didn't have that exhibit one in our attachment for the term.
Right. That exhibit one is?
We didn't copy all that because there's so many pages. I know we only saw a section of like 78 pages, and we only had?
Right. This is only about half of the, of the RFP, but it's, exhibit one is the RFP.
Right.
And we can also include other documents under exhibit one, and one of those documents is going to be the report that HRC did that spells out what the scope of the work is, what things have been eliminated, and, and the revised project cost. That will be part of exhibit one as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. Further discussion? Councilman Teetz?
I, I'll be supporting this. Probably people's hair will fall out, but I'll be supporting it for the, for the, for the reason that it will go forward, and I think the council's been fairly clear about that. And I guess there are two schools of thought, first being take your ball and go home, and the other being, you know, it's a situation which we're set, and either we can make the best of it, or else we can complain, and I think we need to try to make the best of it. I'm going to be voting yes, because it does set those limits on the cost, and I think that it's crucial that that's washed, and I know many of us up here are very, very concerned about that, so God willing, it all just pans out just fine, so.
Thank you. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I nine is the application regarding a new specially, specially designated merchant license for Camel Management Incorporated. That's a company called Troy Smokers. There are two resolutions, would someone like to move one of them? Councilman Slater?
I'm going to move resolution A as printed, which recommends denial, and if it does make it to the table, I have something to say.
Okay.
I'm going to move A.
Is there a second?
I support second.
Okay. Resolution A has been moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion?
It's a resolution, go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Slater?
This is the second similar issue that's come up regarding a very similar business, and the last council, or council recommended denial, and that got overturned. But from my perspective, I think it's important to send a message that we don't want to mix, mix the two, alcohol and tobacco, especially when 18 to 20-year-olds frequent that type of an establishment. So that's my reasoning. And also, I, I think the Liquor Commission is going to be revisiting this type of liquor license in the future, and it's my hope that this probably will not come before us again, but those are the reasons that I'm recommending denial, as I did the last time that a similar resolution was moved forward.
Other discussion? Councilman Teetz?
I've talked to several people about this today. I believe it would be unfair to the business to deny them their liquor license based on the activities of a different business, a different owner. As are located in the notes, this owner passed all the background checks. This owner was approved by the Liquor Commission unanimously. And whether or not there have been problems with other types of businesses, we haven't shut down every other type of massage parlor, even though we've had problems with, with one. In the same way, this will have an impact on the business, Troy business, because they will have to pay their attorney to go and appeal at the, the Michigan Liquor Commission. And so I, I don't think it's fair to pick on this, this business, even though we've had incidences with a similar business in, in the city. I just, I don't think we, we should treat this particular owner this way, so I'll be voting no.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I, you know, I had some questions that I, I needed to follow up on my own, just to get some, some backstory on this as well. Obviously, we were given information that it met city ordinances, and it also met the requirements of the MLCC. But I think when we addressed this type of license in the past, and I know that that date was given to us, I don't have it directly in front of me, but we had some additional background information at that time, and that wasn't specifically related to the business that may, may have had problems after their license was approved. I think that was general information about the likelihood that an establishment that sells tobacco is frequented by people that are between the ages of 18 to 20 years old. And so there's information that was provided to us about the types of liabilities that this may open up, just in general, not related to a specific business. And at that time, once we received that additional back information, the council voted to not approve the license for, for that business. And I think much of that still kind of applies today. I think that the fact that the Liquor Advisory Committee has indicated in their minutes that they were probably going to be revisiting this issue to see if some changes should be made in the ordinance is probably a direct response to the conversations that we had before, and probably some of the conversations that have had, had been had since. So I think I'm relying on a little bit of information that I've also had from past experience on this. And so in accordance with the, the city administration recommendation to deny it, I would be denying it, and I'd also be asking that Liquor Advisory Committee move forward in, in looking into those changes in the ordinance as they discussed in their minutes at their meeting.
Councilman Fleming?
Just to clarify, though, the Liquor Advisory Committee, which is an advisory committee of the City Council, recommended approval of the request. I think this is one of the few times where we see a Liquor Advisory Committee recommending approval, and then city administration recommends a denial. So this is a, this is a more difficult one for me. But I think the Liquor Advisory Committee was unanimous in their recommendation, and we appoint them to, to do this, just a difference of opinion. I think no matter what we do, the state has a final say anyway. I think what Councilman Slater's attempting to do is to send a message to the state that they need to look very closely at this. But I always just, just a recommendation. Am I correct? Ask the city attorney?
Yes.
I was just going to add some speculation as to what the Liquor Advisory Board, what their thought process was. I was actually in attendance at the meeting before the meeting where this came up, and at that point in time, they had asked for some amendments. We were obviously not able to present them and wouldn't, because the license, the liquor license application was filed before then anyways, would not have been able to apply them retroactively. I believe that they thought because they did not have any ordinance provisions, that they did not have a choice, that they were required to, to pass that. So I think that might shed some light as to why, even though they were concerned about it and have expressed their concern, why they voted in favor of this particular resolution.
Councilman Henderson?
I'm in favor ironically of both Councilman Slater and Councilman Teetz's arguments. It's, it's not a good thing to have 18 to 20-year-olds frequent a place to buy one product and be presented with a situation where they can get another product that's not legal, and I've had experience with that in my own family as well. So, you know, I understand some of the issues there. By the same token, I hate putting an extra burden on a, a business that's trying to, to make a living in, in this marketplace and take away a product that could potentially enhance that business. That said, I'm going to be voting in favor of denying this liquor license.
Councilman Teetz?
Question for the city attorney. If, if indeed the city does deny, and they go on later on to the state, the state approves, would they still be operating under the ordinances or rules as they are at this moment? You see what I'm saying? If, if indeed the Liquor Commission comes back, let's say tomorrow, and sets up some new rules or, or new guidelines, would they be grandfathered in, or would they have to deal with these new regulations?
It depends on what the ordinance says, but if it's, it will be provided for in the ordinance. So if, if there is to be a grandfathering, that will be provided in the ordinance, which of course would have to come to this body. So you would have, be the final authority on any ordinance amendments.
And so at that, at that point, if, if indeed they, we did have those changes, is it, I guess, are we going to be visiting with Camel Management again, or this will probably be the last time we see them?
This will probably be the last time, but again, it depends on the language that's in, that's in your ordinance. There certainly are arguments for grandfathering businesses that, that are out there, so.
I know this is business is a little different, but if you go to any pharmacy in town, am I correct that you can buy liquor, you can also buy tobacco there, and a lot of other things as a teenager? You know, but we're seeing out here, and I'm not for promoting either one, but, but we're seeing out here a business that's not that much unlike many other businesses where you can go and buy these products today, and teenagers can walk in and, and do that. I think what we're dealing with, we've seen an occurrence by a business of a like nature here in this city, and we're looking at, at that and basing a decision on it. I can tell you that there are pharmacies in this city who also violated the liquor ordinances when it was coming before this council, and we had to vote on, on those quite often. So it's not just that this tobacco industry that's violating these liquor compliance ordinances, there are pharmacies that do it as, as well. So I'm trying to distinguish the big difference here.
Councilman Slater?
I understand, I understand that there's a fine line. For me, I can only speak for me. And I do think we need to send a message to the Michigan Liquor Commission that, that this is different, though. This is different than a pharmacy. And if I could just point out that when this came before this council the first time, there were, there weren't any violations. We based our decision on, strictly on having a mixing alcohol and tobacco, or alcohol and tobacco, and that's the only thing that is sold at that location. And when that first one came to us, our Liquor Advisory Committee, Committee advised, advised us not to approve it. So I'm a little confused why they, why they went ahead and didn't do that the second time, and I understand maybe some of the reasons for that. But if you look back at the first resolution that I asked to have printed and given to council, the Liquor Advisory Committee recommended denial, and that was before there were any issues with that business whatsoever. So they were recommending denial based on what I think the city administration has told us tonight, that they, they're concerned about increasing probability of liquor license violations for those businesses that primarily sell tobacco products to patrons, including those between the ages of 18 and 20. So that's where I'm coming from. It has nothing to do with that they had a violation. We voted on this before that ever happened, and the Liquor Advisory Commission requested denial at that time. So I simply want to send a message that the Michigan Liquor Commission needs to, to take a look at this, because it is, to me, it is different than a pharmacy. It is different than Kroger's. It's different than, than other stores, because it is strictly alcohol and tobacco.
Councilman Henderson?
To further that distinction, with a pharmacy, you know, you may be able to get a, a pack of cigarettes and a case of beer and an assortment of other things. When you go into a tobacco store, and I frequent it a few because I, I do smoke the occasional cigar, you, you have a variety of paraphernalia that you can purchase. So they, they do cater to that, that element, and that's one of my fears with this interaction.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
And just, just to give some background detail, I know that one of the questions that came earlier today was from Dane Slater, just wondering what the result was of that last discussion that we had for a similar type of liquor license, and it was in August of 2010. There was a recommendation to deny it from the Liquor Advisory Committee, and of all the members present, we voted unanimously to deny it. So I just think in terms of setting a policy, that's what my belief was to do, that that was the policy then. And I think we did have some additional information. We may have had some additional information from other community groups at that time and that we don't have tonight, but I think that it really is just in keeping with that policy and that message that I was supportive of before, that I'm continuing to support it now, not necessarily because something happened in between with, with a business and, and another business is being punished. That's not the case.
Let me offer a compromise. It's simply this. The prior business, to my understanding, the owner had some issues, previous issues about selling alcohol to minors, and I can't speak to what went through people's heads on prior councils and whatnot, but rather than force this business to have to go to the State Liquor Commission, spend time and energy and resources, why don't we approve them? And then at the next meeting, I would like to suggest that we send a resolution to the State Liquor Commission from the city stating our concerns and the track record and history we've seen from other businesses that are in the same industry. I don't think we should get in the policy and the habit of saying, if you're a tobacconist, you're, you shouldn't have a liquor license, or if you have this sort of business, you probably shouldn't have a liquor license. I think we need to look at the individual and the basis, and so that's a compromise I'd like to offer. And so if you're interested in compromise, you can join me in voting no, and then shortly thereafter, I'll bring up a resolution B. And at that point, I'll throw on an amendment, just for the whole team's sake, and we'll get this thing situated here in just a minute, and I promise I won't talk anymore.
Yeah, could we call a vote, please?
A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Resolution A?
Resolution A to deny the liquor license approval.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
No. Motion passes. The liquor license has been denied. So we can go over resolution B and, and move on to the next item, and that is consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items that need to be removed for discussion? Okay. Is there, would someone like to move the resolution forward then? Councilman Fleming?
The Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion, please. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. There's no memorandums or council referrals, are there council comments? Okay, there's no study items, so we can move into closed session. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to draw council's attention to the department reports in 2C, the quarterly financial report. I know that's been asked about from time to time. We do have it now in our package. Thank you, Mr. Darling, through December 31st, 2011. And thank you for doing that. And I don't really have any questions on it at this point, but I don't know if the other councilmembers do or not, if they've had a time to look at it, but thank you for doing that.
There were also some very nice complimentary letters to the Troy Police Department. Thank you again for your fine work. We can now move to closed session? Oh, Mayor, I mean...
No, I'm definitely not Mayor.
I was going to call you Mayor Protem.
I'm just finding where I'm at. As most of you know, the tax assessments have been mailed, and many folks have received them. I've already received a couple people that weren't happy, and many people that were happy with what their assessment was. If you have questions or you'd like to learn more, you can certainly call the city assessor's office, and Nino will be happy to talk to you. Or else, I know State Representative Nolenberg is holding a how-to-appeal-your-property-tax assessment. It'll be on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. over at the community center, approximately one hour. The assessor will be there, and he'll kind of give you some basic background of how to appeal your property tax, if that's something you're interested in doing, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Teetz. Any other comments? Councilman Slater?
Just briefly, I meant to respond during public comment response, and, you know, this has been pointed out many times, but continually, people come up to the podium and accuse the city manager of doing something, okay? And that's unfair. If you're going to accuse anybody of anything, you have to accuse this council, because we set policy, we make the decisions. City council made a decision on the golf course. City council makes decisions on all policies and all decision-making, and it directs city management what to do. So I wish people would stop coming to the podium and accusing the city management or Mr. Zurlag of doing something. He only follows what the council tells him to do. And once again, I felt, I shouldn't point that out, because he works through resolutions from council. He does not do things on his own. Blame this council for making a decision. Don't blame city administration.
That concludes the regular meeting. We'll move into closed session.